Falmouth Planning Board to order. Today is June 24th, 2025, and we are meeting at Falmouth Town Hall. My name is John Druley and I am the Chair of the Planning Board. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone this is a public meeting and is being conducted in accordance with the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Please take a moment to silence any mobile devices or electronics to avoid interruptions. Anyone wishing to speak should come to the podium, wait to be recognized by the Chair, and state their name for the record before making remarks. Excuse me, we encourage respectful and constructive dialogue during public comments period. Thank you. And we're going to, we have a period for public comment.
Sorry, I don't want to close out of anything. Thanks, sorry.
If anyone wants to make a public comment on anything not related to any of our hearings this evening, they have to come up to the podium, and they have two minutes. Okay, Mr. Fox?
Okay, I tried to get this through channels, I sent it to the appropriate people, but I didn't see in the agenda, so I just wanted to make sure that it's brought up. I think this is very, very serious. This is a scam that an applicant's getting when they apply to our planning board, asking for fees for their work. Okay, I've blotted out their names, but it's really clever. I mean, the email address is planning.gov.us.com instead of, you know, they've changed little things, so we don't charge, unless Jed starts something new. I don't believe we charge for advice. And everybody's starting to get these things, so we, I wanted the public to know that if you apply for it, you're going to, you could get one of these letters. And I, they're looking for tens of thousands of dollars. You know, they're looking for legal review. It's, it's just amazing. And it says you gotta do it, or you basically didn't hurry your permit along, you gotta send your, and your money in. And it's happening, I think there's more than one person in the audience right now that got one of this this week. So it's really, really current, and the, the main point is, we're not the Falmouth Planning and Zoning Commission, okay? That's a dead giveaway. We're just the Falmouth Planning Board, and we don't charge for advice for it. So if you're getting a bill from a third party, makes it look like a counter, it's a scam, and be careful. And I was, I was in shock when this was brought to my attention, and it's a, it's a current hearing, so it's happening right now. So they just wanted to bring it out, and everyone should be aware, and I hope, hopefully the people at home pay attention to this. But Jed doesn't charge money for advice. Okay, that's all I wanted to say, thank you very much.
Jim?
You showed an invoice. You showed an invoice, next page, what is that?
I was being careful, it doesn't have any private names. This is, I think I took them all off, Paul, I just don't want to go too far. They sent an invoice with an email where it's supposed to be sent, and, and all kinds of information. I, I think I deleted everything, so I didn't want it to be public, but it's, I just, I was shocked when I saw this. And it was a close friend, somebody I knew well, and I'm sure there's probably more than one person here tonight that it's happened to already, so look out!
Okay, terrific, thank you, Jim. Very much appreciated. So, I'm going to see if there's any comments on the, on the minutes for...
I sent it to Jed and John, and they didn't say anything, so I decided to do it myself.
So Mr. Chai looked over the minutes, just checking with any of the board members if they have any changes they'd like to make. This is for the June 10th hearing. No comments? Okay, I think that they're approved then. Do we take a vote?
Take a motion, take a vote.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes for June 10th, 2025, as written.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. So our first public hearing this evening...
Bond release.
Oh, bond release. What if you don't want to do a bond release?
Keep it.
Okay, we'll do the bond release. Is that something that Melinda does? Oh, well done.
So, the applicant for Clam Lane has come and requested the bond release, and the amount of, I believe it was $206,000, engineering's gone out. There are a few minor issues, but nothing to hold up the bond release, and we are going to contact the applicant. He's very aware of, of the, the minor issues, but my recommendation is that you, as a board, release the full bond amount.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question. Okay. The applicant says it's 961 San Antonio Road, this says 955 San Antonio Road, is that the same?
We're not there yet.
We're not there.
Oh, the next one, okay. Sorry. Okay. So we'll have our first public hearing, and the applicant is Minir. And I think we have a continuing...
That's confusing, what could we have been, I have the...
Let's see, where is that? Wait a minute. Okay, I move that we accept the applicant's request, excuse me, to continue this hearing for two weeks until Tuesday, July 8th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, our second public hearing is for Mussalina Pereira. Come to the podium, please.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
So at the last meeting, you folks discussed the application, heard from the public, and I believe we're going to visit the site because there were some concerns about parking in the front yard, space in the driveway, et cetera. I communicated with the applicant in between the two hearings, and there's an email in your packet which indicates some responses to questions that I had, based on the input that you folks had provided at the last meetings. It might be good to read that response into the record, for the good of the folks who are watching at home and perhaps the folks who are in the audience.
Okay. The email that Jed had sent said, "My understanding was that the board had concerns about the parking, number of people in each unit, people potentially living in the basement. They intend to drive by your property to see what it looks like in order to determine if they should require anything further. Can you confirm the following, so I can provide it to the board in advance of the meeting? One, a total of three cars will need to be accommodated in the driveway. Two cars for the first level and one car for the upstairs one, bedroom, one-bedroom apartment. Two, the dirt driveway in the front yard will be removed and the lawn will be reseeded. There will be no parking of vehicles on the front lawn. Three, the first-floor unit will have a total of three people living in it, the second-floor unit will have two people, and the basement will have no one living in it. Four, the bathroom in the basement has been removed." And she replied, "Correct, except number four, I did not remove the bathroom. When I removed all from my basement, they said the bathroom could stay." And so that's the content of the email.
Okay, thank you. So the bathroom in the basement, is it a requirement that it gets removed, then?
No, it is not.
So it is not. Okay. So are we at the point where we need to ask anymore from the applicant, or, or read the...
That's up to you, so we prepared, I went ahead and prepared a decision, a draft motion for you, considering the answers provided in the email. Some of the information that was inside of the email made its way into your draft motion, so it really is up to you if you're ready to approve the application as presented, or ask other questions for the applicant.
Okay. So I'll ask, Charlotte, do you have any further questions?
I do not. Mr. Stein and I did go on a site visit, and we subsequently went to visit with the Building Commissioner, and learned that they have followed all the procedures and have worked with the Building Commissioner on this, and therefore there's nothing in the bylaws to prevent this from going forward, but it would be good to be listening to the neighbors and addressing their concerns. It is a neighborhood, and being neighborly isn't a bylaw, but it's certainly common courtesy.
Yes, all right, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I was concerned with some of the things that the neighbors brought up, especially the number of people that were living there, and, you know, of course, it's, it's hearsay, but it made me decide to look up differences in lodging, what a lodging house is versus a rooming house, and, and that there are regulations and licenses required for that. But since we are setting a limit on the number of people that are going to be living in that house, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Thank you. Jim?
I think we used to require, when we looked at special permits, we talked about screening. I don't know, maybe that's gone away, but I, I think there's, very easily for either a fence or plantings could, along the driveway, for extra cars, wouldn't be much money, would really help with the neighborhood, and I, I kind of hope we have the ability to do that. And if we don't, I think we're in big trouble. Well, I think we should do it anyway, and have the state take it back. I like, I really feel that strongly about it, because if in fact we are going to just let anything happen, I would rather go down in flames and be criticized for it than not do it. I think it's wrong not to make a simple accommodation to, to block out if they're going to be parking extra cars, to have just a few trees and a fence. Neighbors on either side have them, they have some fence, they just need to extend it, it's not a big deal. I think we should require it, and if we can't do it, we can't do it. But that's my opinion.
According to the state, we can't require anything that you would not require of a regular, single-family house construction, and we do not get involved in single-family house construction.
But we do get involved in...
But not, the screening is not part of it. You would not ask of single-family houses to screen their driveway.
It used to be, well, we never did it.
So you cannot ask the ADU...
That's a, you know what, we'd never reviewed a single-family home before for landscaping, never, ever, ever, but we've always reviewed a special permit for landscaping, period.
Yep, and the state has now changed that, and it's not a requirement anymore from us.
Quite possibly the applicant would do some landscaping there, anyway.
You can, you can recommend it.
I have, I thought I just did.
Pat?
I'm sorry, no, that's the incident.
Oh.
Above the landscaping?
That they can recommend it, but it's not a requirement. Right.
Yeah, that's just what I would have said also, that it's neighborly to cooperate, and if your neighbors would like to see some trees planted along there to screen the view, they're not that expensive and they grow fast, so that would be neighborly. We can't require it.
She wants to say that when she first bought this place, the place was... I'm sorry, I'm just translating exactly what she's saying.
Can you give us your name for, can you give us your name for the record, please?
Joseph DePaula.
Thank you.
Okay, and she said, "Since she got this property, it's getting better, because the place was horrible, and she's just trying to get things in place, and she is okay with the landscaping. She will do it."
I realize that, I remember what she said, how she's been working to improve the place since she bought it, and I do appreciate that. This is a suggestion that would be coming from the board. Thank you, and we hope you continue.
Thank you. John, can I just mention one more thing? So, the planning board cannot limit the number of occupants in the house. She has stated how many, so in our findings, we can say how many are going to be there, but we can't put restrictions on that through our permit. So in the findings, we're going to say that, what, what was said here, how many people will be in the house, but it won't be a condition.
Okay, so that would still, because we're complaint-driven, that would be up to the neighbors if they felt that it was, it was becoming a rooming house. They would have to file a complaint?
Yes.
And then it would be investigated, and then if it is, has turned into a rooming house, it would have to go through all the permitting and...
Yep, whatever requirements, yep, to rectify it.
Okay.
And the complaint would go to the building department?
And the complaint would go to the building department.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
I thought this was very thorough, what you wrote up. I just want to point out number six, the sixth condition, that weekly and monthly, monthly rentals are not allowed.
She knows that.
Okay. Is it a minimum of six months, is that? Just going to be weekly and monthly?
So technically, no, it can't be a minimum of six months, because the Attorney General didn't allow that language. So the only thing we can say at this point is weekly and monthly rentals are prohibited, and it cannot be used as a commercial accommodation at any time.
As a commercial accommodation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Down the end of the line.
And they say the last will be first. Get ready, next hearing.
I'd just like to say again that this applicant really spent a lot of time in the Building Commissioner's office, trying to get it right, and that's a good way to do. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. We ready for a motion?
Okay. I would recommend, Mr. Chair, that you read the entire decision into the record, because there are some areas that we didn't highlight that are important findings.
There's public.
Okay, so don't forget about public comment, I'm sorry.
So before we have a motion...
Yes, before you do that.
So before we take public comment, I want to say to the public that this applicant and all the, the ADU applicants will have to have, go through the assessor's office for a permit, they're going to have to go through the billing permit, building department for a full inspection, and they're going to have to have rental registration with the town. And if anyone from the audience would like to speak, come to the podium, please, and state your name. We're going to let this gentleman talk first. Yes.
Yeah, I just want to tell you, thank you very much, because I was at the last meeting, and I had my concerns, Steve Dennison from 12 Deepwood Drive. I just want to say thank you for, I went to the building department, I went to the zoning board, I went over all the concerns that I did have, and they addressed all of the problems that I had, and that they were going to rectify it. The only problem, the only problem that I had was the health department, that the planning board has to do the enhanced nitrogen septic tank, and they told me to bring that up, just to make sure that was one of the stipulations, but everything else was addressed through the, through the billing department, and, because they told me it was on, it was a, it was a 9B, it says septic system must be enhanced nitrogen approval through the planning board, and that's the only huge, the only problem that came up. Everything else was addressed, and I'm, thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you.
So according to our Board of Health referral, there does not need to be a denitrification septic system upgrade.
So did you, did you hear what, what Melinda said?
No, I didn't hear that.
So according to our Board of Health referral, we do, they do not have to do a denitrification septic upgrade.
But it says right here on the, on the application, it, through the planning board, it's nine, it says all ADUs must have nitrogen-enhancing systems installed.
Where did you get that?
Right on the line, Paul, it's right on the line. It's a procedures for the town planning board, accessories dwelling application checklist.
Okay.
Yes, you can come over on your own website and bring us...
Looking at it.
All right, we'll take a look, thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Yes, Jim?
I'm familiar with this. It's if you're adding a bedroom, but when they're taking one away, and they're keeping the bedrooms the same, the Board of Health doesn't get involved. But if you are adding the flow, then you, then it has to...
As long, yeah, if their current septic system doesn't...
If there's an increase, and they use the term "flow," which is 110 gallons per bedroom, and I'm trying to do it, and if you increase the flow, you'd need to, but if you keep it the same, by taking out a wall and keeping the bedrooms the same, that's how you get around it, and I think that's, that could be what's causing the confusion here.
Well, it's on the application that the, that the Board of Health will determine, determine whether it needs it or not, and, and what we have here, the Board of Health has determined that this house does not require, but it is on the application process. So we ready for you? Bob, please?
Draft, June 20th, 2025. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Mussalina Pereira for the construction of an attached one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at 15 Deepwood Drive under Section 240 12.2, site plan review of the zoning bylaw for plans entitled. Site plan for Mussalina Pereira, 15 Deepwood Drive, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Warwick and Associates, Inc., scale of one inch equals 20 feet, dated December 17th, 2024. ADU building elevations and floor plans. Pereira Residence, 15 Deepwood Drive, East Falmouth, Mass., 02536. Two sheets, prepared by Frank J. Guy Architecture and Lighting Design. Scale, as noted, dated May 20th, 2024, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: property description and current state. The 16,000-plus-to-minus-square-foot property is located in the residential C, our C zoning district, and in a coastal pond, Great Pond Ovale District. The property currently contains 2,808 square feet of single-family dwelling. Proposal, general: the applicant is proposing to construct a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit within this existing single-family dwelling occupying the second floor. The accessory dwelling unit proposed at 888 square feet will be 32% of the principal dwelling. Principal dwelling currently has three bedrooms, two on the first floor and one on the second floor. With the ADU approval, the total bedroom count for the property will remain at three bedrooms. The applicant indicated that she is renting the two-bedroom unit on the first floor of the existing dwelling, and the current occupancy is three people. There are currently no residential units in the basement of the dwelling, nor does the applicant intend to provide them in the future. Proposal, parking: a total of three vehicles will need to be accommodated in the existing driveway. Two vehicles for the first floor, two-bedroom unit, and one vehicle for the second floor, one-bedroom unit. Although vehicles currently parking, parking in formal driveway located across the front yard, the applicant stated that this will no longer be allowed and the area will be armed and seated. The site plan and existing photographs show ample room for the vehicle parking for both units, therefore complying with Section 249.1C and Section 240 14.1E of the zoning bylaw respectively. Proposal, wastewater: the existing septic system is suitable for three bedrooms, and the applicant intends to keep the existing three-bedroom count on the property, therefore no alterations to the septic system are needed. Proposal, the architectural style, building elevations, floor plans. The architectural effect is incidental, too, and in the same, came, and, and in the same character of the existing primary dwelling. Therefore, the application complies with the Section 249.1D of the zoning bylaw. Butter in public comments: although there were letters of opposition received and comments made during the board's public meeting, the board has determined that the applicant has adequately addressed the issues raised. Board's general finding, department review, the board, town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned application, and the board finds no outstanding issues. Board general finding, building code and zoning review: the planning board's review and approval does not include building code and zoning review, and the board refers that to the Building Commissioner. Board general finding, complies with ADU and site plan review bylaw. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of Sections 249.1 and Section 240 12.2 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions: one, standard condition modifications. The plan shall be constructed as approved; any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 240 2.2C, 2.1C, 2 of the zoning bylaw. No permit for occupancy of the new construction shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Two, standard condition stormwater: the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property but as a public right-of-way. Three, standard condition utilities: any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Four, standard condition addressing the applicant: the applicant shall see the Engineering Division or address assignment for the new unit prior to applying for a building permit. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the building per Section 99.1 of the zoning, the town code. Five, standard condition building code: the project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the Building Commissioner. Six, standard condition ADU rental, weekly, monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals, are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor the accessory dwelling shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Seven, standard condition lapse pursuant to Section 240 12.2 of the zoning bylaw: the site plan review decision shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not soon commenced, except for good cause. The determination of good cause shall be made by the planning board. Eight, standard condition assessor's office inspection: the applicant shall contact the assessor's office for an inspection of the ADU prior to, of occupancy. Nine, special condition rental permit: the applicant shall obtain the required rental registrations from the health department prior to renting the ADU on the second floor and the residential unit on the first floor. Ten, special condition driveway: the dirt driveway in the front yard will be removed and the lawn will be reseeded. There will be no parking of vehicles on the front lawn.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? You have a question?
No.
Okay. You're the first one to say aye. Oh, a second.
Do a second.
A second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
John, could we hand a copy of this to them, because it would be easier for them to follow.
I think Melinda will take care of that for her.
What am I going to take care of? I didn't hear that.
She'll need a copy of this decision.
Oh, yeah, she'll get it.
Does she have to get, and the people will get?
No, we'll, we'll be in touch.
Thank you. Okay, next hearing will be for Carlos Santos.
Did I put the next one here?
Yep.
This one. There you go. So it was the same thing last week, we were here, my name is Belini Feria. Last, no, like, two weeks ago, we're here, you guys were doing a drive-by to look at the driveway because of the dumpster, so we're just here to get you guys' position on it.
So I talked with the Board of Health, and the town doesn't have any requirements for dumpsters, no, I mean permits, there's no one that issues a permit for a dumpster, so they're allowed to have it.
Every time I've got a dumpster, I had to get a permit from the fire department, so I disagree with that.
Okay.
I believe if you look hard, you'll see it is required.
If it's, if it's big, it's only four, if it's bigger than four, you need it. I called the fire department, they went there.
Anything else, Melinda?
No, not, not about the dumpster.
Okay.
Is there something?
Let's start with Paul. Paul, any questions or comments? Tom? I know I actually talked to Melinda today, just want to hear you one more time, what's going in the dumpster? Are you throwing any of your household trash into the dumpster?
Yes.
You are.
I get it picked up every week.
Okay. You know, I, involved in construction, some of those things aren't really sealed, and it draws rodents, you know, unlike a, a plastic barrel.
No, I understand, but it's rodents, like, I started having a problem after my neighbor got a chicken coop, but, you know what I mean? Chicken coops attract rodents also, but it's his yard, so it's like right behind my house, and what am I going to tell him?
I know, but I'm just talking about the dumpster.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying, like...
That's all. If you're allowed, you're allowed.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom. Pat?
It's a comment like I made before. You live in a neighborhood, you want to live peacefully with your neighbor. They're saying that the lid is always open. Every time it's used, try to make sure it's closed.
No, I'll make sure it's closed, I just, like you said, everybody's talking about the neighbor, but the first time the neighbor came over to say something was to complain about the dumpster. She did, I was there for like two years, nobody ever stepped, say, hey, are you living here, so, you know what I mean? I will do my best to keep it closed, I, I take care of the, yeah, but I also work a lot. I get home, like, right now, I was still coming from work, I get home every day at like 7 o'clock at night, so it's kind of like, I'm doing my best. my best, so...
I know, I live by a chicken coop, too.
Yeah, so, you know.
I occasionally get their eggs.
Yeah, that's nice. See, I haven't got any yet, so I might ask.
A lot of the four-yard dumpsters come with a bar and...
Yeah, no, yeah, they just changed it.
And a lock, if you want to put a lock on it.
Yep, this one doesn't have the lock, we has the bar. Before, they didn't have the bar, and I asked for a new one. Now we have the bar.
It may have the opening for a lock, you have to buy your own lock, but that may help, that may, it would keep the lid closed.
Yeah, no, I'll make sure the lid will stay closed. I'll close it myself.
Yeah, have you made any accommodations to manage the runoff so it isn't running into the public way or into the neighbors?
Runoff of what?
Downspouts and drywells?
Of the...
On the site plan, have you made any accommodations to make sure there isn't any runoff from the roof drains to either the neighbors or the street?
Well, I don't think that was the issue, was that...
I thought, I just heard it read as a requirement in the last finding. That is a requirement, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
That's only if they're doing new construction, that we get involved with drywells or drainage or anything.
That's why I just asked, are they doing it?
No, it's already, they're not doing any construction.
You're saying if it's new construction?
Correct.
Or an addition?
Correct.
He's not doing any, any construction.
No additional entryway or anything, nothing in need of building permit?
It is what it is, it's there, he's just coming to get it permitted.
So they can build it without a permit?
It wasn't actually...
And then have to do, and then come in and we let them do it afterwards?
It wasn't actually built. Downstairs was already just rooms, like, it was open rooms.
We don't have to have this discussion.
Yeah.
I just thought, I thought it was a requirement, I must have misunderstood what I heard the last time.
He thought you needed to put some drywells in where the gutters come down, and...
No, when I bought the house, everything was already there. The fire department came over, everything's the same way. So now I'm just trying to legalize, put the doors, close the doors and things like that.
It's not, it's not a concern.
Yeah.
Bob?
No, I mean, I wouldn't want to have a dumpster next door to my house, but, you know, if it's legal and the neighbors aren't knocking your door down over it, I can't, I can't say anything, so...
I can see why the neighbors object. It may be a small for a dumpster, but it looks big in that yard, and it's got a great big commercial sign on it. I think it's the big black and white lettering that...
Yeah, that's for the...
So that some way to screen it as a courtesy would be good. But the thing I particularly wanted to say is that the neighbors, when they came two weeks ago to this hearing, they were saying they were concerned that no inspections had been made. So when Mr. Zine and I went to visit with the, we went to your site, we went to the other site, and then we went to get a lesson from the building commissioner about process. In fact, all the inspections were made.
No.
It's been inspected several times, so there was no failure on the part of the town through the inspections that were required in order for us to arrive at this point at this hearing. And I just wanted that to be a public thing, that our building department and inspectors are doing their job.
Including health department?
Yes, every single one that signs off. Building, conservation, but particularly the building department is really responsible for the main things that we can see and that function, yes. The inspections have all been made.
Thank you very much for that. Any other comments? Bob, you are, read...
Okay, draft, June...
Mr. Chair, before you start, I apologize for interrupting. Just an error in the draft motion, so the name of the applicant is Carlos Santos.
Okay.
We had two different names on applications, but we've cleared it up with the provenized application, it is Carlos Santos.
Okay, because, yeah, that's what it said on the agenda.
Yeah.
And I'm glad, because I don't have to try and pronounce the other name either.
I was going to do it too, but let's just go with...
Okay, yeah, do you just want me to read the red?
Again, not to forget, public comment. Melinda's doing an excellent job of reminding us.
I forget the public's here. Anyone in the audience like to make any statements or have any comments or any questions? If you step up the podium? No? Okay, thank you.
Just the red? Okay. Draft, June twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Carlos Santos for the construction of an attached two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at one sixteen Jamie Lane under Section two forty twelve point two Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw. With the following findings and conditions: the applicant is proposing to formalize an existing two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit within the existing single-family dwelling occupying the lower level. The accessory dwelling unit proposed at eight-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet will be thirty-eight percent of the principal dwelling. Parking, the site plan and existing photographs show ample room for vehicle parking for the proposed ADU and existing dwelling unit, therefore complying with Section two forty-nine point one C and two forty fourteen point one E of the zoning bylaw respectively. A butter and public comment: although there were letters of opposition received and comments made during the board's public meeting, the board has determined that the applicant has adequately addressed the issues raised. General board finding: the board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of Section two forty-nine point one and two forty twelve point two of the zoning bylaw. Conditions: one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Two, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property but as a public right-of-way. Three, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town departments. Four, Engineering Division for address, the applicant shall see the Engineering Division for address assignment for the new unit prior to applying for a building permit. Upon completion of the construction, the applicant shall post the address for this building per Section ninety-nine-one of the town code. Five, the project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Six, weekly, monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals, are expressly prohibited. Seven, the Section two forty two point, at twelve point two of the zoning bylaw, the site plan review decision shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not soon commenced except for good cause. The determination of good cause shall be made by the planning board. Eight, the applicant shall contact the assessor's office for an inspection of the ADU prior to certificate of occupancy. Nine, special condition rental permit: the applicant shall obtain the required rental registration from the health department prior to renting the ADU.
Second.
Any other comments? Yes, Jim?
Am I to understand that special condition number two is inappropriate?
You can strike it if you'd like. We put it in as a standard condition for all ADUs, but to the point that you made earlier, if you'd like to strike that one, which is the stormwater, that the project must not direct stormwater onto abutting properties in the right-of-way.
It kind of says must, so I think it, you know, I got an unclear message if, from our staff saying, we can't do it, and yet...
I didn't say we can't do it, I said it's for new construction.
So we typically handle drywells for new construction?
It's in the, it's in this permit.
We put in the condition to...
I'm confused, I'm just saying I'm confused by what's going on.
It's a standard condition, so if someone was to come here and had to do any kind of addition or construction, then it's in your decision.
Is it possible in the future for this type of ADU where it already exists, that it isn't part of our decision?
Yes.
Leave that one sentence out?
Yep.
Would you like to remove it this evening? Because you can't.
We'd like to remove it.
Okay.
Please.
Consider it done.
John...
Because you can't have it both ways. Yes?
The applicant said that these stormwater drains, whatever they're called, were already there when it was inspected, and the building inspector told him that, so it was already conforming. So I think that it must conform, but it's because it was already there, it's not a particular thing he had to address. But it's still true that it has to be there. I don't think we should take it out, I think we should just understand it better.
Yeah, to, to, if I may, respond.
Sure.
It is simply just a standard condition that we put into all of your motions, because as a general rule, any application and any permit that you, or any application that you approve, all applicants are to, are to keep their stormwater on their site. So we simply just add it into every application as a way for, as someone used to say, belt and suspenders, right? So we used to, we just put it in there to make sure that it's crystal clear that all stormwater stays on site.
And that's if you're adding roof area. It's the roof area that collects the rainwater that you then have to take care of. So if you're not adding roof area, and the existing property already conforms, then you don't have to worry about that.
Yeah.
So I want a clarification from the applicant. The discussion we're having is drywells for where the gutters come down.
Uh huh.
Do they have, does every gutter have a drywall on it?
Well, I have a builder, I'm just here representing the house, but I have a builder that's doing everything.
My understanding, what you said earlier was, whatever is there, is there when you bought the house.
Yeah, it's like, yeah.
You have not made any improvements or...
No.
Okay. I don't think that's what he said, that there are drywells there.
I think he said that it was, that was the way it was when he bought it, and it wasn't a problem.
If you're comfortable, I would recommend that you strike the condition and that you move on, because this is, as we've talked about, this is just interior renovation. It's not an exterior construction project, so therefore there wouldn't be any reason to do or mitigate any stormwater.
So we can't make it, make it a condition?
You certainly can add it as a condition.
Could.
It's, it's a blanket condition that we recommend you have in there, but if you'd like to strike it, you can do that. I would recommend you keep it.
Keep it in the decision?
Keep it in.
So he'll have to add drywells?
Nope, nope, you're just keeping stormwater on site, that's all it says.
It can be done with berms, all different ways, you don't need drywells. There's many, many ways you can do it.
All right. So you'd like to leave it in the decision?
I think we should leave it in, it's a standard condition.
Everyone feels that way?
That's just so water doesn't go on the neighbors?
Yeah.
Right.
I'm far from the neighbors, so I don't think it's going to get...
And to the road.
And it's a flat.
Yeah, I'm far from the road, too, so I don't think it's...
No, leave it in, leave it in as written.
Yeah, see, I'm like...
So can I get a motion?
I don't get any.
We had a motion, we had a second.
We moved and seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. In unanimous.
Okay.
All set?
All set, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Thank you. So the next hearing, the applicant, Edward Maritz. So this is a new hearing. Site plan review, application to construct an attached accessory dwelling. Tom? Yep, this was published in the paper, or this was actually published through regular mail. Twenty-eight abutters were sent this notice.
Just for clarification purposes, you may be reading the wrong notice. This was published in the Enterprise on June sixth, and forty-five abutters were sent a notice by regular mail.
Okay. Is this for the dwelling at twenty-three Atwater Drive? And whoever's here to present for the applicant? Subtle recording, please, and your name?
Hi, my name is Ed Maritz, and I'm the owner of twenty-three Atwater Drive, and we have submitted the application for the ADU. Only not sure how to use this. The house was built in nineteen eighty-eight, it's a split entry, it's a five-bedroom, two downstairs, three upstairs. That's the, is that the septic?
Yes.
That's the lot part? Everything that's downstairs was installed in nineteen eighty-eight. I don't know, this is just basically the, well, that's the septic system for five bedrooms, and then the... To excuse these plans, these were subject to rain and everything else when we were building the house. How does this work? Here we go. Okay, let's go to the pictures, I guess. I took two pictures at the bottom there. One shows the driveway, the trucks and the boats on the left are on the next property, which I also own. It's a clear driveway because what you see on the other one is the back of the house where the rear entry is. The house is on a slope, so that the exit door comes straight out and is part of the foundation, and the front door access is on the bottom picture to the right of the car that you see, but that's the picture of the driveway. There's plenty of room for like six or eight cars there. The traffic on the left is on the next property. If you go back up here. These are the blueprints that have been saved since nineteen eighty-eight. I can't read them myself because of the age that they are. This bottom print here is this first floor, which has our living room, kitchen, back and forth, it's a keyhole ceiling, front to back. That's already there. Let's see if we move further up. Okay. You'll see that's the front of the house and the side, the elevations. And the next page should show the basement area. There it goes. This is the basement down here, front bedroom, back bedroom, boiler room, storage area. This area right here is the utility closet for the electric panel and the water service. It is not a bedroom. Over here, we have a full bath, there's a, there's a, an area right here for a washing machine, and here's a full bath right there. And then this area was allocated to have, for a refrigerator and a stove, and this is a countertop with a sink. All of this was installed in nineteen eighty-eight. For the last two months now, the house is built in eighty-eight, and everything below level of the land, I removed all of the rugs and the hydrotherm covers for the heating system because of the amount of moisture down there caused it to get all rusty. So we've, for the last two months, I've been working on it to take it apart, new carpeting, paint, the bathroom for vanity. The tub has remained, I'm going to replace the toilet, and it, tub's around in new sheet rock around the tub, and new cabinets for this area right here and a new sink. It's all shown, a sign of age due to the moistureous condition down there, but that's been over a period of twenty-four and twelve, thirty, sixty, forty years. And we've just installed an entire AC system to the house, basically for upstairs, but in the bedrooms downstairs and all rooms downstairs, our casement windows would satisfy the fire code exit for minimum five-point-four square feet. So in one bedroom, I removed one of the windows to put a double hung in for an AC, and another one on the west side for an AC, and we're going to put another, there's a double hung here for an AC, a double hung here for an, I'm going to put one in. This casement stays, that'll be the fire exit to satisfy the fire code. This one over here satisfies the fire code, that's the casement. This was all designed back in eighty-eight to satisfy those conditions. And then this window over here was taken out and a double hung put in for AC downstairs, and here... And here's another casement that stays, this whole area was front to back. Currently, the, it was a week ago Friday, I had Empire come in, carpet through here, the two bedrooms, down the hallway, and stopped. This whole area now is snap-in flooring. And the bathroom and laundry area here is linoleum. As I've said, I've been working on it two months, so took everything apart, it's been painted, brought the lights, painted everything, put everything back together, upgraded anything that seemed to be questionable. The application to the building commissioner established the fact that there was about eight hundred and...
Sixty-one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it was under nine hundred to satisfy the condition that led to the application. You'll excuse me, this is... The only question that I had, being a contractor myself, was that the fire alarm system was installed in eighty-eight. The two bedrooms do not have their own alarms on the ceilings, but I have purchased those. I also purchased carbon monoxide combination smoke detector. So I understand from listening earlier that inspections are gonna be made anyway to go through to make sure everything is viable. So when the fire department tells me where to put them, they'll get installed. And I was doing the work on the tub, there's a pipe in there that had a label on it that was signed by the plumbing inspector. All of this was approved as it existed, as you see the layout in nineteen eighty-eight. And I just point out, this is the lower exit, there's the land slopes, you can walk straight out. And then here's the upper exit entrance to come down the stairs and enter the area. And this smaller area will remain not a bedroom. So it's just two bedrooms, boiler room, laundry, bath. And front to back, right here, for kitchen and living room area. If I haven't touched on anything, as I said earlier, the septic was approved, let me just go back to that. This is the site plan showing the house and the setbacks. And here we have the original septic, and it's still operable.
I think we may have some comments on the septic. Len, do you wanna do the referrals, please?
Yeah, so we got a referral from the health department, and Mass DEP recently produced guidelines regarding ADUs. And they require a two-compartment tank or two tanks in series. So you'll have to do those modifications to your septic system.
Can you tell me what that entails, 'cause I don't understand the two-tank thing?
You'll have to talk to the board of health?
Okay.
'Cause I don't know anymore than what I just told you.
So it seems to me they wanna redo the septic.
I think you just have to add something to your existing septic system.
Yeah, you'll just add another tank.
Pardon me?
You'll just add another tank to it.
Okay. Well, there is a, well, just as point of reference, information, there is an existing spot. You should go down the driveway into that area where the alternate site was established when they did the plans, I don't know if that'll...
You'll have to talk to the health department, they'll...
Yeah, yeah.
Talk to the health department.
Well, that's fine.
And regarding your smoke detectors, talk to the fire department before they come for the inspection.
Sure.
Okay, so? Any discussion?
Not really, but I have a question in the photograph that we had in advance. It looks as if, and you showed this photograph, I think. It looks as if some big metal box is blocking...
That's plastic storage underneath my deck.
But it's there.
Pardon me?
And it appears, wouldn't that be blocking the windows in one of the bedrooms?
No, it's at least six feet between that and the duck and the, and the window, there's plenty of room to get out.
It's hard to tell in the picture, thank you, but that was my only question.
Ma'am, there's actually two storage boxes, one sits like this and the other one like that. And the window is a few feet over. Basically, it's kids' bicycles and beach stuff. You know, that's what we use for storage.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you don't see, the window was over and back, this box comes like that, and that box goes like that, so the window has plenty of room to open, so for exit. It's what, you can't tell by that, it's just the ceiling.
It is, a little...
I could take another picture and supply it to the board.
No need, that's okay, I understand.
The cycling and the trash is in a nice location as well, so I'm fine with that. I, I do see the space behind the storage boxes. The driveway looks adequate.
You can't really tell because that picture, I thought I had included the whole front of the house, but there's room for four cars in front of the front door.
And is that, is that pavement or is that gravel?
That's just peystone.
Peystone.
But we have the storage for our trash under the deck.
Yeah.
At the lower landing, there's two cement berms that come out on either side of the door, and there's room for rubbish barrels there. And there are steps that come up, landscape steps and a handrail to come up onto the pathway to go and bring other things out to the fronts, to the street for trash removal.
Thank you, Jim?
Yeah, who, did the board of health do a bedroom count? I mean, I don't, it's not our job, but I, I saw a room that wasn't called a bedroom, but it has a door, privacy, and a closet. I was wondering if the board of health went through and looked at that and says that's okay, I would defer to their judgment, not mine.
It's called a storeroom on the plan.
The board of health said the plans show a five-bedroom proposal and an existing five-bedroom septic system. So he agrees that it's five bedrooms.
So the, the room that they call a storeroom, it has a door and a closet, but that's not a bedroom? I thought we'd make them open the door and have a casement, why do we do that for then? I really am confused by what's going on here.
Sir, that storage is three square feet. It's this wide and this deep, it's, it's not sufficient as a closet. It's just an electric panel and a water meter.
Yeah, basement, he took this room right here. I see a door, and to me, I thought, anything more than seventy square feet, but I'll defer to the board of health, they should know that, not me. And it's a bedroom, if it has privacy, doesn't even have to have a closet, that was my understanding, but I could be wrong. But I just wondered if anyone looked at it, 'cause it doesn't seem to make sense what my understanding of the rules are, but I must be confused.
So our...
I read your, I read his referral.
Yeah, the indication is that they've considered it a five bedroom, yep.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, I had a question as to the bedroom count, because the staff report said four bedrooms, but everything I've seen says five bedrooms. I assume you're making it into a five bedroom.
That's just Jed's error.
A five-bedroom septic in a five-bedroom house, there's five bedrooms indicated on the plan.
You made an error.
Jed can't count.
I was hoping you weren't gonna bring that up.
You know me, I see the dust balls on the floor.
That's an error in the staff report.
But you know, I sort of concur, because I don't know, was that storage room counted as the square footage for the ADU, or wasn't it? I don't know.
I don't know, all I know is that the health agent did look at these plans. I saw him look at the plans, I was down in his office, and he said that it's five bedrooms and it proposed, and it's a five-bedroom system.
Yeah, well, it's not labeled as a bedroom, it's labeled as storage.
He looks at that stuff, though, he's pretty good at catching stuff.
Okay, so that's what I'm questioning, I understand.
None, okay.
Public comment?
So a public comment, anyone in the audience wanna come to, ask any questions or make any comments, come to the podium, please, and give your name? Nobody in the public, so we're gonna continue this hearing?
You can, um...
Just, point of clarification, the third bedroom on the first floor is obscured, this is it right here. One, two, three.
I think we, I think we all determined that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The question was about...
The question of four bedrooms was brought up, I was a little confused by that.
It was the staff report, as opposed to what it looked like as a five bedroom, so. And our planner can't count.
You can request us to draft a positive motion for the next meeting, if you'd like.
Is everyone okay with the positive motion, Charlotte?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, please, positive motion.
So for the, what we'll do is we'll draft up a motion for your application, it will be read into the record at the next meeting, which is July 8th. You can attend if you'd like, but you don't have to, but that will be the formal process the board has to approve your application.
So it'll give me conditions that I have to meet?
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine. I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. In the meantime, you can check with the board of health and see what they're gonna require for your septic.
About the septic.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, the next hearing is the applicant Donald Lund, site plan review, application to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit at thirty-four Overlook Circle. And Tom, any notice, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, twenty-eight of butters were sent notice by regular mail.
Thank you.
Can you just confirm the date that it was published in the paper?
Published in the paper on June 6th, 2025.
Thank you.
And for the applicant?
I gotta answer your questions.
Are you the applicant?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can you just state your name, please, for the record?
Okay, my name is Donald Lund, thirty-four Overlook Circle, he's down with Massachusetts. I tell you all that I'm a little hard of hearing, so I don't know what you've been saying. I cut most of it.
Okay.
Beware.
We'll speak up.
I might answer the wrong question.
You wanna put him on the screen, or?
He's up there now, yeah.
Okay.
That is the site plan, if you want, you can scroll down with the mouse, and you can get to the floor plans of the ADU.
I guess I don't, you know, what you'd like of me. We're trying to build an ADU, I'm, we have a basic cake courthouse. In my age and condition, I can't get upstairs without yanking myself up with the handrails, I can't carry anything up. And I see in the near future that, you know, a one place, a one-floor place like we're proposing could be good for me. The... We could probably do okay in the original house by ourselves, but right now, we see our, we have an older son who's heading for divorce, and it's quite possible he and his children might be looking for a place to stay, and we expect that if that happens, that they'd come to our house and stay in our house, and therefore, the need, further need for the other place. Now, son might not work out that way, he might not care custody of the kids. But we have, if we had a situation like this with an ADU, we have another son ready to move in, would love to be there, grew up there, and would like to be there. So the need is kinda like twofold, a place for an old guy like me and my wife who's catching up to me, and a place for one or, for the other of our three children. Okay. I'm not sure what else you might like to hear from me. We, I have been following your discussions. It's been quite a while going through this permitting, and here we are at the planning tonight. Somehow, right off the bat, after we had the engineering done and all that, the board of health approved a sewage plant. And that's supposedly been approved, and I guess you probably have a record of that, so maybe that's one thing that's on its way. The other thing is, is that I hear you talking about rentals and rental agreements. In the near future, if we do this, we have no intention of renting it, it's more like, here's the family. Provide what you can or might, help us around the house, shovel the driveway, do the lawn and stuff like that. We don't see an imminent rental agreement to anybody.
I don't know how you'd handle that, but that's where we are.
Okay. Thank you.
In the application.
We're just discussing the, the question about, on the application, the size of the ADU and what the plan shows, seems to be a discrepancy.
Okay. Yeah, I, I can't figure it out, because in the application, it said seven hundred square feet. And in the staff report, it says eight hundred and thirty-two. And then I look at, the eight hundred and thirty-two is more likely to be true, because when I looked at the plan...
So what's written on the application is information from the applicant, what's written in the staff report is the, the calculations that the staff calculated from the plans?
Because I'm also looking at the basement, it's eight hundred and thirty-five square feet on here, so eight thirty-two is likely to be true.
Right.
Okay. And then I'm not sure how this is going to happen, that's the thing. It looks like there's a house already there, and then there's a garage slab going to be made, an increased gravel driveway. And I don't know what's going on, that's, that's the thing.
So it's a detached ADU with a garage on the side, which would be the front-facing portion of the structure to the house. So it's ultimately a long rectangle, half of it's garage, half of it's ADU. Or not half, but a portion is garage, a portion's the ADU.
Okay, so where does the bulkhead go to? Is the ADU down the basement, or is there gonna be a basement under the ADU? I'm trying to figure it out.
You can ask the applicant. Yeah, I'm sure you can.
You can say it's a podium, because we're televised, and people at home can't hear you. I'm sorry. Sorry. We just need you to speak into the microphone, that's all.
Is this close enough of that thing?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. In a basement of any place, if it has a clear height, I don't know what it is, three feet or something like that, you need to have access. I think people who have building experience understand what I'm saying, so it's a bulkhead on the back for access to this crawl spacey basement.
Oh, it's a crawl space?
It's a crawl space, it's not a stand-up thing, you can, somewhere in one of those plans we paid for, there's a height for the basement walls, you might...
Okay, thank you.
It's, in fact, it's a... Describes it in a roundabout way, not a way that I'm used to drafting, but...
Right, thank you. Any other questions, Pat?
No, that solves my confusion in a multitude of ways, thank you.
If concrete didn't cost so much, I'd make a full basement, but...
There you go. Tom?
Yeah, hi. Chad and Melina, so how many bedrooms?
Yeah, hi. Chad and Melina, so, how many bedrooms is a septic? Because I just, can you help clarify?
So, they're adding a new septic for the ADU. There was a referral from the Board of Health that I'd like to read out so that everyone is on the same page. So, the septic leaching is su... Oh, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. Thanks. So, there's no issues as shown. The applicant proposes a new conventional septic system for the ADU. The proposed plan will meet current regulations. However, the applicant needs to be aware of the proposed Board of Health regulation requiring septic system denitrification technology for increases in bedrooms to begin to meet Mass DEP's nitrogen reduction requirements. At this point in time, the regulation is under review and has not been through public hearing. If the regulation passes and the building permit is applied for after the start of the date of the regulation, then denitrification could be required for both the proposed and existing septic systems.
Thank you. That clarifies everything.
Okay, thank you.
I might note, if I may, that the building permit was applied for quite a while ago. So, maybe it's for after all these dates. I can't figure that out, but...
Okay.
It's there.
Okay.
See what happens.
Paul?
I'm going to read the same thing. So, I think it's a, it's a interesting comment. I don't know the status of the state review. It may take quite a bit of time. So, if the application, the permit is submitted before then, this would not apply.
So, I'd just like to clarify, it's not the state review. The, our local Board of Health is under review of their regulations and are changing them. And the public hearing process has not started, I believe, or... So, it's the local Board of Health regulation that that needs to meet the state's already regulations.
So, is the, is the time when he applies for, or is it when the permit is issued?
It says, "Applied for." So, he says he's already applied for his building permit, so...
Understand that?
I, I do. I hope you guys understood that. You know, things change, you know, permit-wise and all, your regulation-wise. And that's where we were when we started off, and I'm happy it stayed the same.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jim, any questions?
Okay, I'm just a little confused. The calculations on the size, what, how big is the main house, and how big is the ADU, and does it fit the requirements, the percentage? You're saying that it all fits?
Yes, it all fits.
And we're not, you're not counting the, the size of the basement, or are you now?
We are.
So, now, if that's a crawl space, does it still count?
No.
It has to be full height?
Yep.
But then it counts as the size of the house for when you're looking at the proportions of the ADU and...
Yes.
So, if you, so if you have a thousand-square-foot house and a thousand-square-foot basement, that's 2,000 feet, and you can have a 900-square-foot. I just, it's all new math to me.
It's new, yeah.
Brand-new, and I want to understand it.
Yep.
But a crawl space doesn't count, but a seven-foot-high ceiling in the basement?
Yeah, there is a calculation for the building height of the basement. I don't know offhand what it is, but it's whatever the building department would require for habitable space down there if you were to finish it, I believe. Is that correct?
Does it have to be a concrete floor? It can be a dirt floor?
You know, I don't think they specified that, so I don't know.
It'll be interesting.
That's why we always ask the applicants to start with the building commissioner, to have a conversation about their plans and make sure that the building commissioner is comfortable with these ADU plans before they get to us, because all of those questions are going to be aired out with the applicant in his office.
I'm just trying to understand. I have no problem with this application. I'm just, I'm really learning a lot with the new rules.
We all are.
Yeah.
Tom?
I, I thought the calculation went out the window, that 900 square feet, no matter what.
No.
No, still...
It's 50% or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller.
So, we still do it percentage, okay. My only question is on the site plan, those two reddish rectangles, those are the, that's the garage and the ADU, right? I, I just can't see it.
Yes, yep.
It's so small that I really can't see it. Okay. So, I, I just wanted to look at it in relation to the main dwelling unit and how it looks from the street, because that is something we consider, is how it looks from the street. But, and it's far back enough, so it isn't in front of the existing unit, so I guess it's okay.
He's on a curve in the road right there.
Yeah.
Charlotte?
I see that the building commissioner signed off on this on June 9th, very recently, so he's well aware of it. I have a procedural question. Does Mr. Lund, the applicant, have a copy of the planning board review?
Do you mean the staff report?
Yes.
Probably not. We neglected to upload it to the permadeyes module, but we plan to do that tomorrow and then email a copy to the applicant.
That would be good. It raises some questions that have already been addressed here, but you might want a record of it. So, you'll be receiving the planning board review and have the document.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience want to make any comments or questions? Just come to the podium, please, in your name for the record.
Linda Catalina, 38 Overlook Circle, right next door to the ones.
Thank you.
My husband.
Christopher. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the board. Barbara and Dawn, neighbors. It looks like the, the plan, is it going to keep in line with the, the neighborhood aesthetically? Linda and I had one question that we had talked about with Barbara and Dawn. Most of the side property line, we're direct to Butters.
Okay.
We are on the right side of the new house. Most of the side is pretty enclosed in pines and rhododendrons and can't really see much in there. Just maybe the last 25 feet. And we talked with Dawn and Barbara, and we discussed maybe putting some hemlocks in there or three or four sections of fence.
Okay.
And that's about it, other than that.
It's pretty, it sits pretty far back from the road.
It sits way back from the road.
Yes. So...
But you'd like some additional screening, is that what?
Yeah, if, you know, if possible. I mean, costs are expensive for everything, you know, I understand that. That's it.
Other than that, you're in support of it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, do we close the hearing, or...
So, you can make a recommendation to us to draft a positive motion for the next meeting?
Charlotte, good? Tom, Kim? Okay, so, positive motion, please.
Okay.
So, he doesn't have to attend the next hearing?
No. So...
Unless he'd like to.
No. So, we're going to read into the record at the next meeting, the decision. You do not need to attend to that. And we'll send you all this information, so you, you have it.
All right. Okay, thank you all.
You're welcome.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Next meeting's July 1st.
July 8.
July 8. Well, you don't have to attend unless you'd like to. Thank you. So, the next application is, the next applicant is Raphael Sitatin?
Sitatin.
Sitatin, okay, thank you. Site plan review, application to create five-unit multifamily development and then mixed residential and commercial overlay district at 683 Main Street. Your name for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Raphael Zanet Sitatin.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, yeah, we're proposing...
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to do a notice first. Mr. Chairman, the published date in the enterprise was June 6, 2025. 28 of Butters were sent notice by regular mail. Thank you.
All right. So, we are proposing converting mixed use to residential, to commercial, into a five-unit building residential. Each floor, first and second floor, is going to be two units each, with one bedroom, roughly 500 square feet each unit. First and second floor, basement, is going to be a two-badrooms unit with roughly 1,000 square feet. So, out the, on the basement, we have a bulkhead, which is going to turn into, as we call, a doghouse, where it's going to be the main entrance to the house. And now, we're going to have egress windows as well. And the other exit is going to be through the stairs in the back. So, and then each bedroom, let me see, this is the first, this is the basement existing. This is the basement proposed. So, here's the bulkhead, where it's going to be the main entrance with the so-called doghouse. Here's the other exit. And then the two bedrooms is going to have each one a egress window.
Okay. Thank you. Referrals?
Were you, the building department had some comments on their referral. Are you aware of them?
Yes, I spoke to Chad about it, about the ceiling height. So, I spoke to my engineer. He was wrong. I, I just went over there to take the measurements. We have exactly seven feet four.
Okay.
I asked him to change and send the plans again, so I can upload those documents.
Okay. He had some questions that, that aren't really up to us. It's more to his building code about the window wells and things, just for you to be aware of.
Which is my code as well. So, I'm aware of those.
Okay.
So, part of the application, as you know, is a requirement to create 25% of the units as affordable. So, it is worth noting that 25% of five ends up being a desolate. And so, we've rounded down. So, instead of it being two units, it's, the requirement is, is one unit is affordable, and that's affordable to households earning up to 80% of the AMI. The other component that I just want to bring to your attention is the parking plan. So, on the site plan itself, it appears, well, the site plan shows five spaces, which is a requirement for the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, one space per unit. The application includes three additional visitor, guest, or guest parking spaces, which we thought was a great addition. And then, the last item relates to the waivers that were submitted for this application. So, as you remember, from town meeting, we revised the Mr. Cod language in November. Part of the waiver requirement here is for allowing, folks, allowing the applicant to not submit a landscaping plan. So, that's part of your site plan review ability, is to waive that requirement, because the site itself is essentially asphalt. There's very little landscaping on the site. So, included in your packets this evening is a letter asking for the waiver of that landscaping plan. I will note that, it's sort of where I started, but that there are two special permits that will be required for this application. One is for parking within the front yard and five feet within a property line. And the second will be for a non-conforming setback. So, the existing building, which they are not proposing to move or change in any way, is set back approximately 56 feet, I believe, from the street. Mr. Cod says that it can be no more than 25 feet. But, there is a relief valve in the bylaw that allows an applicant to apply for a special permit for relief from that requirement. So, we noticed that late in the process. That's my responsibility. But, the special permit has been applied for. The hearing will be opened in, on July 22nd. So, you'll be seeing more of the applicant related to those two specific items. But those are the things I wanted to bring to your attention, related to the application.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so, go to...
He, Jim was raising his hand.
The zoning for this property? What's the current zoning?
BR?
BR, but he's technically applying under the mixed residential and commercial overlay district.
Because if it wa, I thought if it was, if it was B1 or B2, they would have six or eight units, but it's BR. That's why we're doing it under Mr. Cod. I, because can't you in business zone get six units per acre?
Yes.
And eight with a special permit, not even using Mr. Cod?
Yes.
Okay. But they're using Mr. Cod now because this is BR and that...
Nope. Just because they came through as a mixed residential.
They, they could have avoided the affordable unit by just applying under the regular zoning.
Special permit.
Special permit. Oh, this is by right?
Correct.
Ta-da. I'm sorry.
You got it.
I was understa, trying to figure out what the heck was going on, and now I got it. Thank you. Complicated business here.
Charlotte?
I think it's interesting that we would be asked to waive the landscaping when the, the planning board review of this, as a general comment, is suggesting that you take out some of the asphalt and landscape over there. Certainly, and their, their thinking on that is not aesthetic, although it certainly would be better-looking. Their thinking is that by reducing the impervious asphalt, the drainage would be better. So, what is your reaction to that?
So, I think that's, is that about the drainage for the water to run off? Is that what it is?
Yes.
So, yeah, we have proposed two dry wells in the back of the house that flows all the water back there, or the rain. So, it's going to be on the, in the back of the house, we have, I would call about 10 feet by 20-ish of like grass. That's where it's going to be in the, where everything back works. We're really not taking anything out. We're putting back on the concrete afterwards.
Putting back what?
The asphalt.
Ah. I wonder, have you, have you already seen the planning board review?
Yes, I saw roughly.
So, you read this, this, asking you to consider removing the asphalt?
The entire parking lot?
No, on the one side, just the one side. And there's a little diagram here that would show where it would be.
This one here?
Yes. This one here.
Yeah. Why would they ask that?
To improve the drainage and probably to give you some open ground so that you could landscape, so that it wouldn't be quite so raw-looking.
Yeah, for the drainage, we're going to do the...
And then you would need a landscape plan.
Yeah. So, for clarity, that is the referral from the engineering division as a suggestion for the board to consider for landscaping improvements. I believe the applicant is looking to put in some stormwater mitigation along the west side of the prop, east side of the property.
Yeah. Because on that side as well is where we're going to do the, the egress windows for the basement. So, that's going to be, that's where it's going to be all the, the pipes that goes for the drainage, for the runoff.
Underground pipes?
Yes.
So, you're going to have to dig it up anyway?
We have like, we have a little bit of space between the asphalt and the light lines. That's a little bit of like grass in there that goes all the way back. That's where we're going to use to do the, the pipes.
We're likely to be continued tonight. Maybe you could think about it.
Would you like to see the GIS to see what that looks like?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, see, it's totally paved over.
Let's try that. That's a little bit better. I believe that shows the...
Yeah, it's right here.
The area, so I'll let you.
So, it's right here. That's where we have like a little bit of grass and back here, grass as well. That's where we're going to use the, the pipes to drain it, all the water back here to the dry wells.
So, you're not envisioning removing any asphalt?
No.
No. Well, I'm very in favor of the project because it adds, it's a good repurposing of this building, and it adds housing, which we need. It's affordable. Everything else about it is good. But making it now residential, really, it would help it to be looking residential if it were landscaped, rather than surrounded by asphalt. But making it now residential, really, it would help it to be looking residential if it were landscaped, rather than surrounded by asphalt.
If I can interrupt, is, is there just one curb cut in that upper corner of the property? Where's the curb cut?
The curb is right here.
The property?
Yeah, right here.
Jed's gonna show the street view so you can better tell.
Yeah.
Street view, may I help you? Pull this guy, there you go. There you go.
Okay, so it's, it's the width of the...
Yeah, so right here, that's where they'll landscape, and then that's landscape over here as well, and then this goes all the way to the back.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering if, since that's an entire apron, almost the width of the entire lot, could that just be narrowed to, say, 12 or 14 feet as an entrance to the property for people to park? And then maybe a little bit of landscaping along the front by the sidewalk?
We have landscape, like a little bit of landscape here, a little trees, a little trees over here, both sides.
Along the sidewalk would be a little nicer, I would think.
Even those ones here?
Up by the road, the sidewalk.
Up by the road.
Oh, you mean roughly here?
Yeah, right along there, you know, have some more landscaping, narrow the apron so that you don't have this wide entrance to the property. And, and where you cut it back, you just can landscape it with something, whether it's planters or, or something like that, or a small wall, or, or something, just something to make it look a little nicer than, than what it is.
We can, we can think about that.
Yeah, make it look a little bit more residential.
I understand what he's suggesting, closing, closing the entry to maybe 16 feet wide?
Yeah.
Instead of, looks like 30 feet wide or so, yes. Close it in on your property with the landscaping.
Okay.
Instead of having, that's what he's suggesting.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments, Bob?
No, I'm good, that was mine, I think the other ones have been addressed.
Everything's inside the existing walls, right? That's all we're talking about, no new construction except the doghouse, is that?
That's correct.
Yes.
Doghouse entranceway in the back.
Yeah. Which in the back, that's where it's gonna be the parking spots for the unit in the basement.
And the taxes owed on our purview.
Any other questions, Jim?
Nope.
Okay, so a que, a question for you is, all of the bumpers along the side of the property, are you going to remove those, or most of those?
The white ones here?
That's correct.
So there were like, there were like all the, the parking spots, once we divided everything, we're gonna reuse them to dictate where the, the parking spot's gonna be for each unit, but afterwards, whatever is left, then we're gonna take it off.
Once you get to the, once you get to the building, you can't park there anyway, you're gonna remove those going to the back of the building?
Yeah, we're gonna take all those.
Okay. Okay, good.
And one of the things that's gonna be coming before us is a permit to park in the front yard?
Yes.
Okay. So I think, you know, where that vehicle is now, that would probably be where the vehicles would be parked.
It shows on the plan, there's like four spots right in front of the building.
It shows it?
Yep.
Right.
Okay, facing the building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, not, not perpendicular.
So ju, just a clarification from you, on, on your plan, it shows the basement as six feet, 10 and a half, or 10 and three quarters inches. Now you're saying you're gonna go to seven feet four?
Yeah, no, that's what I was talking to them before, so my engineer, he miscalculated that. So I spoke to Jed before we had the meeting here, he said like, hey, take, take a look at this one, so...
So he mis, he mismeasured it?
He mismeasured, yeah, so I just went to the property before coming to the meeting here, and then I took the measurement, the exact measurement, seven feet four.
From the existing basement floor to the?
To the, to the ceiling, yes.
Okay.
Which is the minimum required in seven feet to be livable.
All right, so just, you have to be very careful, cause seven feet is the minimum.
Yeah, I know that.
And you're gonna have some flooring down there?
Yep.
Which isn't there now, and you're gonna have to have some fire coat on the ceiling.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have to use a 5/8 sheet rock blueboard, which that's a one hour fire, fire rating.
Four inches can disappear pretty quickly, just, I'm just making awareness.
Yeah, and then even if you use like three quarters of an inch hardwood floor glued to the basement, so we still have a little, a little play in there.
And you're going to have the building completely sprinkled?
Yes, we do.
For fire suppression?
Yep, 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 so we have the sprinklers are installed already. We put the new two inches water line from the, from the streets to the house, so it didn't, just need to be connected now and finished.
Does the fire department approve the two inch, have she said two inch?
Yes, it is a two inches.
They approved it?
Yeah.
Okay. And the five units, four are one bedroom and one is two bedroom?
Yes.
Which of these will be the affordable unit?
The one in the basement.
And that's the two bedroom unit?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I would love to see the asphalt turned into more pervious, just like Charlotte. I really would love to see that, it helps you out, it helps the town out. Every time you've got asphalt, it increases the heat, and we know about that today.
Yeah.
So I'd love to see that, if at all possible, turned into pervious.
Yeah, we can try to play a little bit with those, it's just a matter of like how we're gonna coordinate better with the, all the parkings because usually, usually the parkings, you have to have like certain space for the car to turn and things like that. So it's just a matter of like how much play we're gonna have to be able to, you know, improve a little bit better.
Well, pervious can also be part grass, part gravel, pea gravel.
Yeah, reinforced turf.
Yeah, just, just to get the perviousness of it, because then you've got, you're not getting direct runoff, you're getting absorption.
Yep.
Tom?
My concern was like everybody else here, just drainage and calculations not conforming to town standards, but we're talking about the mitigation right now.
All right, thank you. Paul?
The other issue is, I, I believe this used to be a lawyer's office.
Yes.
The assessor's office indicates taxes are outstanding for this property.
That, we can take care of that.
No permit will be issued until that's taken care of?
Yeah.
So that's just the way it, it goes.
Okay, thank you.
So back to the landscape requirement waiver, you guys need to figure out if you want to grant that or deny that.
John?
Yes.
I think the simplest way to address the issues that Pat and Bob and I raised about the exterior and the asphalt is to not waive the landscape requirement, let's say we'd like to see a landscape plan.
When, when is they gonna come before us for the special permit for the front yard parking?
The 22nd of July.
Cause I, I think the way it's drawn now is very awkward. I would think if you're parking parallel to the front like that, you just back up and then you come around. This way, you, it's really convoluted to try and get out of there. I, I wouldn't design a parking space like that.
There's plenty of room for parking and, and everybody's landscaping.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob, just for clarity's sake, are you suggesting that the applicant switch the parking instead of facing the building to face the abutting property like shown on the screen?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I would think it's a lot easier to back out into your lane where you're gonna be exiting as opposed to trying back out against the street and then try and, or, or cut that corner in order to it, it's just very awkward.
He's only showing four parking spaces anyway in the front.
There's four there and then there's two in the back.
I've just got the same comment, cause I go to a hairdresser right next door.
Yeah.
And they park that way too.
Yeah.
If I had to park that way...
You have to accuse yourself because you might have an interest in this?
I haven't owned the property.
Okay.
I'm just saying for parking purposes.
No, I understand.
Oh, I know you do, you're giving me a bad time.
Yes, Jim?
Well, I think if they're gonna, I'd really like to see the landscaping plan, if they're gonna be requesting a special permit for parking in the front yard. And I think if we did that without requiring a landscaping plan, we might as well just let them do anything they want.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think the idea of releasing that, especially when you look at this and all the comments were brought up, and they're asking a special permit to get around parking in the front yard, and we just say, okay? You gotta be kidding me, they've gotta have a landscaping plan, and I think they should reduce the side, the entrance, give it more green space and make it, put, put in, we can ask them to put in more greens, they're coming for a special permit to get around our zoning laws, so we, this is where we have the right to say, no, you have to do it this way, and I think we should do it. And I'd like to see a really landscaping plan, showing all the comments that everyone's made included in the plan, and how you're gonna park the cars. I don't see how we can approve anything until we, we see that.
Yeah, just a little comment on the, on the apron to go inside of the house, it looks like really big, if you can see the image. But like, two cars coming, one coming in and one coming out is sort of tight. So to get the apron to go inside of the property, to get it shorter, that would, that would be a problem.
Put it on the plan.
Right, well said.
You're, you're only showing four parking spaces in the front, you should be able to accommodate four cars and, and landscape the property. That's what, that's what we'd like to see.
The other thing, that the reason I'm kinda digging in a little bit on this is that we're gonna put five people in homes here, they're gonna be homes for people. And I'd love for them to be able to feel that it's livable, there's green space around it.
It's also Main Street.
Yeah. Make Main Street nicer, too.
But it's a great use of the building, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Any, any other comments, questions? So we're gonna have a continuation?
Need to have the public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting about the public. Anyone in the audience like to make any comments, have any questions, the applicant? None?
So you wanted to, he's gonna, you're gonna need to revise your architectural plans to show that basement height?
Mm-hmm.
And then submit a landscaping plan, and then revise your site plan to show the parking? And if you could also, those parking, cement parking stops, if you could just show on the plan that you intend to remove those as well?
Okay.
Anything else that I need to...
I would just say that if you have any questions about what we're looking for, for landscaping, just speak with Jed or Melinda and...
Yeah, probably, I'll come tomorrow and...
They'll share the information with you.
Yep.
Do you wanna continue this to the, the special permit meeting, which is on July 22nd, so that it's all in one and together?
I, I believe so, everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
So we'll go to July 22nd?
Yeah.
Okay with the applicant?
Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just put in a little presentation? We can do both.
It's totally up to you.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Amy Lowell, I'm the wastewater superintendent for the town, and we're...
Amy, I, I think we need to call your item and then we'll...
Yep, I'm sorry.
Public hearing notice.
I'm jumping the glass.
The next applicant is GHD Inc. And proposal, site plan review application to construct a 1,334 square foot municipal wastewater lift station at the above reference property. And...
Tom, you have any notices?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, this was published in the Enterprise on June 6th, 2025. And 83 abutters were sent notice by regular mail.
Thank you, representing the applicant?
It's Amy Lowell, wastewater superintendent. So the project manager for GHD is very sick, and so she was not, not able to be here today. So I'm here representing the project. Nick Christopher's with GHD and is taking back our, you know, what, what we hear tonight and, to the project manager and the project engineer. So we can just scroll through the plans if and when you like, but I thought I would start with a couple of, a little bit of background. So this is a town project, this is part of a town project. It's the Great Pond Phase 1 project, and it's a town project to reduce septic system affluent flow within the Great Pond watershed to Great Pond, and therefore to improve water quality in the pond. The overall project includes a collection system which is bounded by the black bold line here. That's the collection area, and then the Brick Hill Lift Station is here on the north end of this large town parcel on Brick Hill Road, and then there are forced mains from that, that lift station up to the town's existing main wastewater treatment facility. The Brick Hill Lift Station is planted for the north end of this 20-acre property, which is town-owned, and it's, it extends from, the property extends from T-Ticket Highway up to Brick Hill Road. I did notice there's a small mistake on the application, it said that it's a 24-acre parcel, 24 plus, but the, your write-up was correct, it's a 20-acre parcel. And this lift station that we're talking about, the lift station is really the focus of the meeting tonight, the rest of the project is not up for site plan review, it's just the lift station itself. That lift station is designed and laid out, excuse me, to accommodate wastewater flow from the Great Pond Phase 1 sewer area, which is being constructed as part of this current town project, but also for flows from future sewer service areas. So it includes, it's a little bigger than we need for right now, and it also, it's laid out in a sort of a spread out way in order to allow expansion for future phases as well. So then we can go through some of the drawings, I've put them in a little bit in, in order that I think is helpful. This is a layout, a site plan for the lift station. It's unfortunately not oriented north-south, north is, Brick Hill Road is north, and it's on the right side of this drawing. So you have to imagine it turned, rotated. And so there's a driveway access off of Brick Hill Road, and it turns in, and then there are parking spaces for operators accessing this lift station. There is a, you see here, a, a building, a one-story building for, for the lift station, electrical and generator and odor control, and we're required now to have a bathroom in, in a facility of this, of anything larger than, I can't remember what the cutoff is, but we're now required to have a bathroom in these facilities. So there's a, a building here, and then over on this side is a below-ground wet well, which is where the pumps are located. The pumps are located deep below ground here, this is a below-ground valve vault and below-ground flow meters. And, uh, let's see, I think that's it for the site plan for now. I'll keep going here, this just zoomed in a little bit on the, the lift station, it shows the lift station dimensions. There's a backup generator for power in case of power failure inside the lift station. And there's an electrical room, here's the bathroom, and then the odor control facility. Here is a, some, a couple of architectural views of the building. It's a single-story building, the building, the building height at the roof peak is 23 feet. And, and it's got, you know, a few doors, it's got louvers and a sort of a garage door, which is not really for parking, but it's to allow future access to the generator if it needs to, to be, if a larger component needs to be filled out. There will be some electrical, you know, service boxes on the outside of the building, and again, louvers on, on the other side of the building. One thing that is, I have included this, and I wanna add it to the package. The, I wanted to show that over this wet well, where the pumps are located, we will have a shelter that looks like this, so it has a roof but no sides, and it's got a monorail underneath it, like a, you know, a, it's a monorail, to allow pumps to be lifted out and put on the back of a truck. So this hadn't been included in the plans, but I wanted to show, it's not a building, but it is an above-ground structure that will be located above that well. above that wet well. Um, this, I just wanted to show a picture of, so this, this figure is, is, uh, this picture here is of an existing town lift station, um, that's at the end of the Alphonse, it's the Alphonse Lift Station, which is the end of Alphonse Street. Um, this station is smaller, significantly smaller than the station that we're proposing at Blacksmith Shop, but it gives you a sense of the, the look, uh, that it's, it's got Cape Cod shingles on the outside. It's got, uh, regular asphalt shingles on the, the roof. It will have some, um, electrical boxes on the outside. It would have doors and some louvers and then these below-ground structures. So again, it's not, this is not a rendering of the station, but it's just to show what a, what one of our newer lift stations looks like. Um, and as I'd mentioned, there will be odor control for the facility and it's located inside the building. Uh, the pumps that are at this site are submersible. They're in the ground, in, in the tank, in the ground. They're very, very quiet. Noise from the pumps is not an issue. Uh, the generator is, uh, generators do make noise. It's in a building in order to attenuate noise, uh, and also to make it last longer. The generator would only run when the power is out, commercial power is out, when, which is when other generators might be running in the area. And it is exercised once a month for about a half an hour during working hours to keep it in good shape. Um, then the, the plans include some erosion control, um, and tree protection, um, some sedimentation control at existing catch basins, uh, the stormwater runoff design, and then there's a calculation that's required, um, for this type of work. Um, so that's what I wanted to, to start with and I can pull up, I can either keep this up or if we need to zoom in on things, I have, like you, like you were looking at before, just the, the plans as a PDF.
Thank you. Uh, referrals, please?
So, um, covering this, we did receive a referral from the engineering division. They have several comments, most notably, I think, were two items. Um, erosion and sediment control would need to be added to the plans, but that can be taken care of when they apply to the engineering division for the street opening permit. Um, they did indicate, uh, preference to split the lot, um, considering that there may be future use of the property. I tend to disagree with that. I think, you know, this is the only structure that will be on the lot for some time likely. Um, and if and when a new use is, um, proposed for the, for the lot itself, it could be divided at that time. Uh, so I don't, I don't see the need to do it at, at this point. Um, there were no, um, significant, uh, concerns in the referrals. Building didn't have any comments. Water Department did have a comment about the water service, but again, they would work directly with the water department after this approval process. Um, the one item that we don't have is a referral from the fire department. So we'll be working to get that in between now and when you might, um, uh, request a, a positive motion. Um, and the other items, just to note, are the waiver request letter. So there are several items that the applicant is looking to, to waive from your requirements. Um, most notably, the, um, and if you, if I may, I'll just go through them.
Sure.
First and foremost is to allow for the driveway to exceed 24 feet. Um, that would allow for the service truck that they have to get in and out, um, easier. Um, and then there's, um, landscaping requirements. So there's a waiver, um, asking for, um, existing trees greater than four inches in caliper, measurement at a height of four feet, six inches. So essentially they're requesting, uh, a waiver from the landscaping plan submission simply because it's a, you know, lift station site, um, and the surrounding area will remains undisturbed. So any of the vegetation that's currently there now will remain as is unless it, with the exception of the area that they need to clear for the lift station itself. So there are a total of six, uh, waiver require, waiver requests and five of those are related to the landscaping plan.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a, a couple of questions and then we'll, we'll go to the, yeah, rest of the board here. Uh, how far is this building located from the neighbor's property line?
So it shows on the plan.
I'd say neighbor's homes. Any, any-
Well, from the homes themselves. I don't know that I have that distance right now, but we have, so if I look at the, um-
Their property line, not their homes.
Yeah. So if we look at the... And then I want to zoom in a little bit on this. Um, I'm, so I believe there's a 50-foot requirement and I believe that we are 50 feet at a minimum off the property line, um, with this closest structure. Uh, I was hoping it showed that here, but I'm not seeing it on this plan. We can clarify that, but I believe that it is a minimum of at least 50 feet off from the nearest structure, uh, off the property line.
Then, then of course, the next question is, um, any concerns about any odors from this facility?
So, um, we have a belt and suspenders type odor control, um, uh, specified for this structure, meaning, uh, it's a, it's a biofilter, um, which we, that's, um, it's, it's, it's in the building. So it's, it, we have sort of a secondary containment and it is a biofilter, which is the kind of, um, odor control we have, that we installed at the Jones Palmer Lift Station, uh, which is north of the Hospital Lights, uh, that we've had a lot of success with. That one is outdoors, but it's, uh, that, that biofilter has been extremely successful at, um, eliminating odors at that station. And I believe it can do the same thing at this location.
And if it becomes a real concern, is there, uh, possibility this could be located a little bit further away from?
No, I mean, I don't, we're not going to be able to relocate after construction.
I know, I know. I'm talking about before it's permitted.
So-
Obviously.
I, so this is a, um, this is odor control. Um, it's, it's actually both the biofilter and the, the system includes carbon as backup. So I think that, I, I, I believe this will work to mitigate odor. If it did not, I think that the, there are ways of, um, im, of supplementing the odor control. You can add additional in-ground odor control outside the building. Moving another 25 feet from a property line would not reduce, would not really address odor as effectively as odor control.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't suggesting in numbers. It's a lot, it's a large piece of land and-
Right. So if you, if you go, um, we had a few factors that we were looking at here. One is that I, I know the town, there, the town is considering multiple uses of this property in the future. So we wanted to set it to one side of the, uh, northern end to allow for access, um, to, for further south for future uses. Also, further to the east at the northern end of the property, the, um, topography drops off substantially and there is, um, a, uh, stormwater detention basin, for lack of a better word. There's a very low point, very large stormwater area back there. So this is a, um, this is an appropriate place for the lift station and it is, it's shifted off to one, one side of the site to allow access and to avoid the, the drop-off on the other side.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, I'm going to ask our board, any questions? Paul?
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. One is, what's the capacity of Phase One?
You mean, what's the flow?
Yeah, the pumping.
On, on average, we, we expect 114,000 gallons per day. On average, 114,000 gallons per day.
Okay. And as other peninsulas come online, obviously Phase Two will be coming online.
So I'm sorry, that's the, that's the flow for the Great Pond Phase One area. There will be other, um, flow from, from additional lift stations will also be coming to this station as part of Phase One. Um, so, uh, I, I don't have that number right in front of me, but let's call it, uh, it's approximately, uh, 175,000 gallons a day, um, additional. So we call it, so it's, um, uh, a little less than 300,000 gallons a day would come to this station.
Transmission facilities for those will be on the same site?
Yes.
The force main size for the fu- future?
Yes. It's dual force mains. So it's dual force mains. So it's actually a pair of force mains. So in the, in the early phase, you'd use one and as, as you, as you ramp up in the future, you could use two.
Okay. It's a great location for this. Thank you. Tom?
Yeah. Hi, Amy. So when John asked, when John asked if you could add something to, like another level of, uh, reducing the smell, what did you say you could add? Possion?
So we are installing a very, um, a state-of-the-art and well-sized odor control. So I, I'm, I wouldn't, at this point, recommend adding additional, but there are ways of supplementing odor control if that were not to work. So you can put in an in-ground biofilter, for example, uh, or you can add, um, you could add carbon units. There are lots of ways of addressing odor. So you could increase the capacity of odor control in the future if there were an issue.
It's not cost-effective to do it now instead of later?
So we've, we've designed the odor control with safety factors in, in mind. Or in, we've, we've employed safety factors in the design of the odor control.
Okay. Just one other question. Um, you just mentioned the possibility of, uh, future use, uh, for this thing. What are some examples?
So the town does not have, um, final or even draft, um, watershed plans for the remainder of the watersheds on the peninsulas, but, um, the town has, uh, will be working towards those plans over the next five years. And the town's been talking for a long time about searing, uh, the next peninsula to the east, which is the Acapescot Peninsula, and then smaller portions of the next couple of peninsulas and as well as the Seacoast Shores Peninsula and Antler Shores and Seapit on either side. So those could in the future come to this lift station.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, just a follow-up question. In the future, will there be any, excuse me, will there be any treatment on this site, pre-treatment, before the pumping?
No.
Thank you.
That, there is, there is nothing in the plan with, for pre-treatment, I-
So purely transmission facility up to the treatment?
It's just moving it up to the treatment plan.
Thank you.
Pat?
My main concern was odor control because I remember too much about the Eastman's as well as the one you mentioned. And I no longer smell anything around the Eastman's building there.
I'm glad to hear that. Yeah. So at Eastman's, we added a, a carbon, uh, system outdoors and that has been very successful at that location. Um, and the system at Jones Palmer is, at the Jones Palmer Lift Station at the Lights is more like what we would be adding here, except that it would be indoors. And that's a higher capacity, uh, more complex system.
Kim?
I'm all set with it.
I'll wait till I hear comments from the abutters.
Okay. Charlotte?
I'm curious. This, it's listed as being on, uh, a different address than Brick Hill Road.
Right. So, uh, that was one of, um, Scott Schluter, the town engineer, or in the engineering department's comments. It, the address of the parcel, the parcel connects or it, it abuts both T-Ticket Highway and Brick Hill Road. And, uh, it, so the address that's list, that the property has right now in the town system is 632 T-Ticket Highway. Scott actually has, uh, one of his comments was we should assign a new address. He actually has assigned an address of 100 Brick Hill Road, but it's not showing up in GIS yet and wasn't in the town permit system yet, so we didn't use that. But that, we can certainly do that, make that an official address for, for the lift station site in the future.
The Brick Hill address would make it possible to look it up and see exactly what houses are around it, where it enters Brick Hill and see the, the neighbors. It would just give us additional information.
So the abutters to this property were notified, AD plus abutters. And, and we are well aware of, of what properties abut this site. I just was, I was looking up, I, I was recalling a drawing that shows the actual distance from the, uh, nearest property line and I wasn't seeing it on this drawing, but we're well aware of the locations of, of abutters. And, um, the, we, we can add this address, we, we need to get this address incorporated into the, in each of the town's systems. It's in one system, but it's not in the permit system or in GIS yet. So we will move forward with an address that, that makes it easier to look this up, to know where this is when you look at it online.
I wasn't questioning your awareness. It's just our awareness.
Sure. Would be improved. Yeah, I get it. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Any, uh, questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Just step up the podium, please. Give your name.
My name's Linda Hagan. Um, I'm on Broken Bow Lane, so kind of, um, side by side to this, I guess, or a little bit down. Um, my main concern is, um, I'm sure several people have, is odor control. Um, I'm very concerned about that because we have all, you know, just, um, within the last, uh, five years or so, moved into this area and, um, that would really be a big hit to our property if it was going to be maludinous. My other concern is, um, noise from traffic. Um, how often are people going to be coming in there? Or how often are trucks going to be coming in and out?
Do you mind, I need to step up and answer? Uh, so that's a good question. Um, the wastewater operators visit each of our lift station sites once a day. Um, and, uh, they're visiting in a regular truck, pickup truck and, uh, but if there is maintenance at the station, then they would, uh, you know, they can bring, there are other trucks that can go there to do the maintenance. There is also, the reason for the extra wide driveway is that, um, at least once a year, say, we'll call it once a year, that's how frequently would you, we do all of our other lift stations. Our vac truck, which is a 40-foot-long truck, has to come in and, um, vacuum the grid and solids out of the bottom of the wet well, the bottom of the, it's a tank. And that truck is 40 feet long and it, you want to make sure that it's not veering into the other lane when it, when it exits or enters. So that's the reason for the wider entry. So when the, um, so if there are issues and for maintenance, you may have additional vehicles there, but normally it's a, a single operator's truck visiting once a day. And they spend a little bit of time there every day and then once a week, they go to each station and do a, a bigger inspection. Once a month, they do an even bigger effort where they'll go and they'll run the generator, like I said. And the generators run to, to exercise it and make sure it's ready for service in an emergency. Um, and, uh, but that would be during regular working hours. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have another question.
No. Oh, sure. Go ahead.
What happens if this fails? Like what are, um, for us that surround it, what are the plans or whatever in place so it doesn't impact us, so it doesn't impact our, um, property, um, our neighborhood, um, any of our sewage issues, ours, you know?
And I mean, maybe I'm not as educated on-
No, you're doing fine. You're doing fine.
That's okay. Those are good questions. So Broken Bow, uh, except for the very, the property that, um, the two properties that abut root are, are closest to 28. None of the rest of Broken Bow is unfortunately in the sewer area. So the, that, that, um, Broken Bow will not be, will, will continue to have your existing septic systems and this, this project will not affect those. If in the future the town expands and, you know, that's a whole separate concept. Um, as far as, so the wastewater system is designed with, uh, primary regular operating systems and always a backup. So I mentioned the backup generator, you know, if the, if the, if the commercial power goes out, we have a generator to power the, the system. We also put in a real backup, which is a, what's called a bypass connection. And it's a way that if the, um, if the, if the whole, if we were not able to operate the pumps for some reason, we can pu- pull up a portable pump and pump directly into the, the pipe system using, using- we can pull, pull up a portable pump and pump directly into the, the pipe system using, using an exterior portable pump. That's a real backup. We've never done that for any of our lift stations, that's a, but that's a, a backup system. The other is that there are multiple pumps. To start with, there would be two because of the lower flows. But in the future, when it increases to larger flows, there would be four pumps. So we have a bunch of level switches in the tanks, and the pumps run between two level switches. But there are, you know, there are levels that trigger alarms, and the backup pump comes on if the level gets higher. There are many backup systems to keep this system reliable and safe. The other, the other thing is that it's all, this station, like all of our other stations, is, is, it's connected to our main plant via SCADA system, or it's a communication system. So when there is an alarm, when there's a problem with the lift station, that alarm calls out to, and it's off-hours, that alarm calls off to, calls out to the chief operator. And the chief operator can, can log into the, the system either on his cellphone or on a computer and see what's going on. He can see what the water levels are and see what the, which pumps are running, and can decide whether or not to call anybody in. So there is, we have good visibility on what's going on in that lift station even when we're not there.
Any other questions?
Good evening, my name's Stephen Augusta. I'm very familiar with the property here.
It used to be the Augusta property, right?
It was, it was. I'm very much in favor of it, as my family. It's been a long time coming, and we're looking very forward to getting it done to keep our ponds, estuaries, keep the sewerage where it belongs. And we're very much in favor, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Richard Castleberry, forty-one Broken Bow Lane. We were here when they initiated the initial plans for the, all the houses to be built at the end of Broken Bow. And I was wondering if this is facilitating the further plans to put those twenty-eight houses in use.
I believe she said that no one on Broken Bow is going to be...
Well, we're, we're affected by that road at the end of Broken Bow to twenty-eight, like nobody else's business. I mean, we got, we got cars going in and out of there all the time from the big house, number one, uh, number twenty-nine. It's top-notch painting, is working in and out of that house. Cars out there all the time. So we're worried about the twenty-eight units being at the end of it because they're going to be at the, the end of our Broken Bow all the time, either going or coming. You know what twenty-eight-unit houses would be? Say, for example, two people working, they're getting two cars, okay? Then you're talking about all the parking, which we heard through all that before. There's not going to be any room for cars going in and out of twenty-eight. Now, we'd be fine if they had another exit and entrance other than Broken Bow for that particular unit, if they're going to put all those houses in there.
Well, this, this was more of a discussion of the septic, of the pumping station.
I know, but that's to facilitate the, that twenty-eight units, is it not?
No.
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 Not at all.
It's not associated with it?
No.
You, if you'll remember, that was one part of their problems that they didn't...
She can explain it to us. Okay.
So I would like to pull up, I think I know what you're talking about. You're talking about a very, a totally separate project.
Yes.
Which we're not here on tonight, but, let's see, I was wondering. So this is not the best way to show it? Maybe it'd be best to show it in GIS, but I'll just, I'll just say, there's this, this is the lot you're talking about here at the end of Broken Bow.
Correct.
Right? And this, when this project was planned, so the, the town submitted a targeted watershed management plan that included this service area, I don't know, at least five years ago. And at that time, when the plan was submitted, this was all one lot. And it has, and that lot abutted Route twenty-eight. So that lot, abutted meaning it connect, it touches Route twenty-eight. So that, this lot was included in the sewer service area. So the sewer service area is this. So the sewer service area, that is actually, you can barely see it, but that's that lot there, was included in the sewer service area. So it's since been subdivided into two lots. But, but those two lots, because of where the line was drawn when this was planned a number of years ago, those lots are in the sewer service area. So when, so maybe nothing will ever get built there, maybe something will get, get built there. But there will be, sewer will be available to whatever goes there. But it doesn't, it's not built for that project, and it's not to facilitate that project. It's just a, the situation is that that property is in the sewer service area because at the time the line was drawn, it, it touched Route twenty-eight, which, which is where the sewer was going.
Okay, how does Brick Hill, thing work with Broken Bow?
I don't understand the question.
Well, it's all about, you, and, and Brick Hill and Road.
Can you come up to the podium again, sir? You have to speak into the microphone, please.
I want to know how the Broken Bow deals with Brick Hill and...
It does not.
Station. Nothing? Nothing to do with it?
No.
Why was she using the lift station at Brick, Brick Hill and?
They're going to do the lift station, it looks like it's about a mile, not a mile, but it's quite some distance from Broken Bow.
It's, it's a good mile, because we walk it every day.
Quite some distance, so. It, it really has nothing to do with, any homes are going to get built from Broken Bow.
Okay.
One does not, does not...
Just the two lots, but the main road are going to, could be on the sewer, correct? All the rest of Broken Bow is not in any sewer plants?
The two lots on the west side of Broken Bow that are closest to Route twenty-eight.
Right on twenty-eight. But he's worried about all the stuff in back.
The houses.
Not part of the plan.
He's concerned about a development that's, that's proposed for one of those two lots.
Yes. Just one of the two lots.
He's proposed for, he's concerned about a development that is proposed for one of those two lots. But this project, to put in the sewer system, is not done for that project, and it doesn't facilitate that project. It just, that site is in the sewer area, whether this, that's, so that's the situation.
Yeah, okay, I'm all set.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Susan Masstrom-Matei, I live at one thirty-two Broken Bow Lane. I just want a little clarification on the map where it's outlined in yellow. I am, my property is on the far end of Broken Bow, where I understand that you say it's not affected. But the way the map looks, there are like woods across the street from me. So, and with those woods, could possibly abut Brick Hill Road? I'm just wondering if any of those woods are going to be knocked down? If I'm going to be staring at this station out my front window? Like where is it exactly going to be built?
I would say this phase is not going to have any impact on your, your view.
So the, the, those woods will stay woods, or is...
Can I just clarify? Yes. So what, what we're talking about here, what's, what requires site plan review is building the lift station. And the lift station is going to be up here at the north end of the property. There will be pipes as part of this project that connect from here on Route twenty-eight up through this parcel along this side and up through here. Those pipes will be installed underground. So we will be cutting down some, whatever vegetation is in that pipe corridor. Some of it is already cleared because there are, there are pathways and roads through there. But there will be clearing, additional clearing through here in a pipe corridor up to the, the lift station to get the flow from, from here, from this service area up to here. So I, I don't, somebody said, we're not going to do any other clearing. The, the site plan review is for the construction of the lift station. We are putting in pipes on this town-owned park property, and the pipes will involve some additional vegetation removal. But the lift station itself, with the, the buildings that we've described, is up here on the very northern end of the property. So Broken Bow is here, right, along here, and you're up here somewhere, right? Up near the northern end of Broken Bow?
Close to the end of the town, is that?
Right. So, so you're a ways from the lift station. I, I don't know whether or not you would be able to see, to notice, you know, additional clear, removal of vegetation for the piping.
So is, is that outlining of the yellow, is that the woods across the street from my home?
So this, this figure is intended to show the entire town-owned parcel. And yes, it is, a lot of it is unfor, is, is vegetated. A lot of this is, is vegetated. But the lift station itself, where we're talking about site plan review, is up here on the north end of the, of the site.
So will you be tearing down, like chopping down those woods across the street? I mean, like what will I see?
So...
Will they stay?
So some clearing will take place to install the pipes up to this lift station. I can't tell you at this meeting what, you know, where that is relative to your home. We can clarify further. It's not really part of the site plan review process, but I would be glad to talk with you about it. And we can, you know, Nick is here and is taking note of the questions. So, and we can also get your email address or your phone number and talk to you about it. So I, I didn't want to, on the one hand, it's not part of site plan review for a building. On the other hand, it is part of the project, and I want to, I want to be clear about that. This is, so this, I highlighted this in GIS, when you click on the parcel, it highlights the whole parcel in yellow like that. So I was showing, this is the twenty-acre parcel, but this is where the lift station is going, is up to the north. I'm sorry, you're going to have to...
I believe that there is like a, a strip here that is, you know, kind of like the, you know, going down and then onto the woods. It's owned by somebody else.
Right now, there isn't any. There is additional undeveloped land here.
Yeah, that, like gray strip.
Right here that is non-town and, there's a little strip here. So this project probably doesn't directly abut your property, but I can't guarantee that we wouldn't change the vegetation within your view. We'll, we'll have to look at it.
I have one more question. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I know that you had mentioned about the odor control. But if there was, say, a hurricane or something, and I know you have a generator, but if it fails, I've read briefly that it could make, you know, some of that contamination go into homeowners' homes and be very costly, in the thousands. And people can't, a lot of people can't afford that. Like what, what is, I mean, the chances that the sewerage is not going to go into our basements? You know, what's the, what's the probability or the risk factor of that? And how far out, even if it's a mile? Like how far does it normally go out when this instance is, when systems like this do fail?
So I believe your properties are down here, right? Right? So it's, it's quite a ways from the lift station. But even the, even properties immediately around this, I would say... So we have eleven existing lift stations. And in the time I've been here, we have never had a, we've, we've never had a major event like what you're talking about. I've worked for the town for twenty, twenty-three years, twenty-two or twenty-three years. We've never had a catastrophic event at a lift station like you're talking about. We did, outside a lift station, we had a small backup in a manhole. And it, there was a puddle of wastewater around the manhole, and we stopped the backup and we disinfected that. You know, it was like a seven-foot-square area, you know, and we disinfected that area. So I'm not, I never want to say there will never be odor, there will never be a backup, there will... It's an operating system, things do, things can go wrong. We have a lot of backup systems to prevent things from going wrong. But I, I, I do not want to say to anybody, things can't go wrong, because you know things can go wrong. Everybody knows things can go wrong. We've planned for those things, and we have backup systems to prevent them. And we plan for what goes wrong even, even in those cases. But, you know, I hope that answers your question.
All right, thank you. I think we have a couple more questions for you, Amy. Couple, couple more questions for you. Tom? Yeah, hi, Amy. So has the town ever made a practice of adding back any plantings in an area if there were too many removed?
I don't know about a practice of it. The goal, so we'll, we'll see what, what has to happen along the, the frontage there. The goal is to preserve some of the existing vegetation along Brick Hill Road to the degree possible. If at the end of the job, we need to do some planting to obscure the site, we can, we can plan to do that. I, you know, I, I don't want to make promises about maintaining it there because there, there, not only do we have the lift station there, but we also have pipe corridors and electrical. So the pipe has to leave the lift station, and the electrical has to, has to get in there. And, you know, there, there's a lot of work going between the site and the street. But the, the goal is to do what we can to preserve some of the vegetation there and to do some replanting along, along that area if, if needed at the end of the job.
Just to protect the abutters.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm all set.
So I just have two questions for you. The entrance, is it gated? Will it be gated?
So we would definitely, we would have, so let's see what we're showing on here now. So we are showing a fence here now around, so this is a fence line. So the fence, we use the building as part of the fence line.
Okay.
And then we have a, a fence around here. This is, I believe, the fence line here. I, yeah, I'm, I'm always a little torn about that. On the one hand, I, I think it's important to have it for security. But, you know, it's nicer, it looks nicer if you don't have a fence. But I think it also keeps everybody safe. So we, we do, we are showing a fence, and there would, our plan would be a gate at this location. So not at the, not right now at the entrance to Brick Hill Road, but at the entrance to this gated area, or fenced area.
Can you share the lot, what lighting plan is involved with the building?
So we generally have...
And the parking area, if any?
Yeah, there's generally outdoor lighting at the, at the building. And we can have that downward-facing. So it provides safety lighting for operators if they need to be there in the middle of the night and security lighting. But the goal would not be to have outward-facing lighting that would impact neighbors.
Okay. Thank you. So no other questions, comments, none?
No.
So you want to put together a...
Positive motion.
Positive motion?
For the next meeting, July eighth.
Sure.
Very good.
Do I take a vote on that, or we're good?
Don't need it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, thanks for attending. Do you want to leave your agenda for your address? Would you want to take...
So next on the agenda is...
It's been a long time.
Good job.
Thank you.
Planning Department report?
Not much to report since the last meeting. As you know, we've been working very hard on our zoning amendments. We're trying to find the right number of amendments to bring to town meeting. Some of those items include, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, looking to amend the floodplain overlay district, noting that that was out of date. And so we're trying to bring that into, into compliance with state and federal regulations. Then we've got the ADU bylaw, which we are considering bringing forward with some amendments because, as you know, the board has discussed informally the potential of removing the planning board as part of that process and going directly, allowing the applicants to go directly to the building commissioner.
Excuse me, excuse me. You have to, discussions out of the room, please, because we still have a hearing going on. Thank you.
So we've been working on that, adding in some language from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities Model bylaw for the ADU, so there's some work that we're doing on that. So there's some work that we're doing on that. Then there's some other items, uh, that came to, um, our attention in the Attorney General's review of the ADU bylaw, which they just recently approved. One of those items is the, um, potential amendment that would allow ADUs to be allowed by right in the business districts. Because the Attorney General noted that, um, ADUs are allowed at any, any place where a single-family home is allowed by right. And those are allowed in the business districts. So we may be allowing ADUs or we will be required to allow ADUs, um, in the business district. So we've got a lot going on with zoning amendments.
If there's a primary dwelling already there in that, on that lot.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question on that one. I know when we had the meeting last week, we were, you're presenting to the realtors, they talked about that with the conversion bylaw, if there was a conversion, that every one of the condos then would have a right to have an ADU. No? I thought that was brought up at the meeting. I'm just wondering if, if you, if you had, if you, if we had in, in business, if they had all these unit, if there's all condos? Could, could, could a condo then have a right for an ADU? I mean, the numbers get really big when you...
It's a great question. So that's part of our learning, learning curve here too, is understanding exactly what it considers, what is considered to be a principal dwelling. That's a good question. I wouldn't wanna answer that right now. I'd wanna look into it more. But...
But what you just said, I think it, it, it sounds like it could go that way.
I think it all depends on lot coverage and septic.
But if you had all the proper lot coverage and, I mean...
I mean, you can multiply ADUs on a lot, so, yes, apparently. I mean, I don't know how the ownership would go if you have like separate ownership for those condos. Or if they're, you know, it has to be a primary dwelling.
Well, condos are primary dwelling.
Right.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
You own the condo. How much of the land around it do you own?
Well, it varies.
All of it is common area and some of it has ex- uh, exclusive use. But everything, every condo owner owns all the land around it together. But some of it is designated as exclusive use for each different condo.
Is that the commonest way it's done?
I believe the common area, it's, it is the way it's done.
It's common area. How could you put an ADU on it? You don't control the whole lot.
I think before we worry about it, let's find out what...
Yeah, yeah. So to wrap that up, we, we've been working on zoning amendments, um, and other projects. But we've really been focused on zoning amendments because as you, as I hate to admit, November is just around the corner. And we wanna make sure that you're in a position to have your public hearings and allow for ample amount of time for people to understand these amendments and then make comments. So we're looking at, as I mentioned at the last meeting, early July, uh, to try and start those. Um, but we're working with town council on, um, you know, just figuring out the language of the amendment. So we'll be bringing those forward soon. So that's, that's really our report. I'm gonna let Paul talk about Shiverx Pond. I'm not gonna talk about that. He is...
What pond?
An important announcement.
Okay, so committee reports. What is that? What is that big fish? Is that your, your report?
The, uh, platform's almost finished. The park, they're working on again today. I don't know what the town is going to do as far as an opening goes, but the fishing platform's working very well. And they have a large mouth bass caught by Suzanne Halston's grandson from Maine.
Wow, look at the size of that fish.
Day before he caught a perch that was a little bit smaller. But, uh, it's been very active over there, even though officially it's not open.
It's amazing.
It's officially open. The platform is officially open, the park is officially open. You can visit and sit and enjoy yourselves.
But they're not finished with the work.
No, they're, they're all, they're all wrapped up. Shiverx Pond platform is complete.
Are they gonna clean up the, uh, vista clearing around the platform? Are they gonna take away the barriers for the runoff? That's not done.
We'll look into it. I was personally on the platform last week and saw the first person, not this, not this gentleman in the picture, but I saw someone fishing already on the platform and, you know, we had a small chat and she just was totally enjoying it. So I think it's a great addition. I'm glad that Paul pushed us so hard to get it done and it's finally finished, even though we're maybe at 95%. Um, but it's a great addition to, to the downtown. I, I hope people get to a chance to enjoy it.
Yes.
I think that fishing platform should be named after Paul Dryer because he's the one who pushed this and pushed it and pushed it to make sure it eventually got done.
And I, and I have to say, I mean, Paul's mentioned it before, but the DPW did a tremendous job.
Absolutely.
In the, in the park next door. I mean, it's just...
Fantastic.
But Vicki Lowell is the one who got it started. So if it's going to be naming, it would be Lowell and Dryer. Couldn't move Vicki out.
All right, any other committee reports? None? Okay. Announcements?
We have correspondence, which we can do under announcements.
Sure.
Um, as you know, the Cape Cod, um, Commission is reviewing the Cape Cod Country Club solar project.
Yeah.
Um, and they've continued the hearing for the subcommittee to, uh, July 10th, uh, 2025 at 5:00 PM. So everyone has a notice in their packet. Um, it'll be a virtual hearing, so again, July 10th at 5 o'clock. If you needed any more information, you can go onto the Cape Cod Commission's website and find it under, um, I believe their events tabs for public meeting notices.
We had our first hearing on it last, uh, week and it was, uh, well-attended. It was a three-hour meeting and quite a bit was discussed. It's gonna be a really large project for the town, for our community and we'll see how it goes. But the next meeting, like you said, is, uh, July, so. And quite a few people participated and had to say, um, um, for or, or against it. So...
John, do they have to have a landscape plan?
Yes. For about 150 acres.
Right.
Yes. Um, future agenda items?
Got it.
Yes.
I have two. One is, we mentioned this once before, Lighthouse Station is moving on quite nicely. And I know the, the dome is coming last. There are beginning structures outside the, the, uh, lighthouse, oh, dome itself. I'm curious how they're gonna move forward with the rest of the zone. Would we be able to get some information from, uh, the developer on that?
Yes. In fact, I did get an update. I, I don't have it with me tonight, but I can provide it, um, at the next meeting.
Good. The second one is, uh, we spent a lot of time, we had a lot of people, uh, talking about the redevelopment of the, uh, circular building on Main Street for affordable, not affordable housing, workforce housing. And that seemed to be stopped somewhat. And I read in the paper that the, uh, development on Sandwich Road, Fort Sandwich Road near Dunkin' Donuts is going forward with the same developer. I'm just curious how those projects are going to go forward.
I think it's, I think it's a different developer, but, uh, maybe the same builder.
But there was so much...
That's how I read it in the paper.
Particularly about the redevelopment of that circular building. And it seems to have fallen by the wayside. I'm curious where that is, whether it's a funding issue or economy issue or something else.
Uh, I don't have an answer for that.
Is there a way of getting an update on that?
If you'd like, we can provide an update at the next meeting under future agenda items.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? No? Our next meeting is, uh, July 8th. And, uh, I'm sorry?
Move to agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.